Armament and they would like to come up with a plan and work with us over time. Which I think is a really good thing that, you know, one of the DNR agents that I was talking to is a history buff and understands the history of Walton Lake and how the, you know, it started out as a fishing resort and then it developed into what it is today. And, you know, since they've never really had any access to it, that they, they're not forcing their way in, but they would definitely like to have a relationship and help us. So again, this was kind of the talking points that, you know, deep watering and what happens, they're, they're not real concerned. They do realize that, that they're, as we do construction and do maintenance, there's going to be a fish kill and that we're gonna lose those fish and that they're happy to come in. But they also know that there's potentially invasive species in there that they would like to address and maybe get rid of and start over.
Did they tell us, any idea what the invasive species might be?
They did, and I don't, I, basically, I think that it's pretty much grass carp, but they have a different name for some other fish that I didn't recognize. I, once again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a fisherman, I'm a biologist, and I don't want to make anything up, but they, they had given a fish name that I was not familiar with. But, um, anyway, they did, they did the same thing at Lake Darling and Lake Geode and a couple of others around the state of Iowa, that they went through this very same thing. They did discuss in this document some challenges and, you know, it discusses the sedentation and the nutrient values and the algae blooms and, you know, they don't discuss the, the, the fish species in here. But then they talk about, they go over the potential solutions and there's actually several pages, not pages, several paragraphs of the things that we need to do over a period of years to help this lake be rejuvenated in the way that it was. We built this lake over a hundred years ago and they would like to make it last another hundred years. So it's pretty good for the age of a man-made lake. The second thing is, you know, they talk about the stakeholders, then they talk about public involvement, and then the timelines. The timeline that they give is a lake restoration project may take as many as fifteen to twenty years and it's not out of the realm of possibilities. The lake will not be fully restored in a short timeframe and, and they go through that. And then they talk about the, the planning and future monitoring of the watersheds, of water quality fisheries and shoreline evaluations. So that's what this document is. And then they, they are drafting us a, a plan of next steps and, you know, you know, we'll, we'll work with them and see where we go from there.
So the upshot is that on this counter, this, this study session, the bullet points we had under the DNR report really are moot at this point because we're not, not like it's gonna happen over the summer, right? Because, I mean, we didn't know that for sure. We, we thought maybe that that was something we wanted to do right away and put this delay the project, what will we get out of it? But again, it's a much longer timeframe that they're talking about, so.
That was the question I had, I listened to you for it. What's, how is it relevant to what we're deciding, decided to do now? And is it?
Uh, it, it is not relevant. The, the DNR is like, you guys do what you need to do. They're very interested at what the lake, what's on the bottom of that lake. And, you know, as we draw it down, they're gonna, they're gonna come out and they're gonna look and see. But they also.
I mean, if we draw, draw it down the lake, they will have an opportunity to determine whether, to what extent there is an invasive or invasive species in the lake, is that right?
That's correct. So there's, they could do it one way or the other. We did nothing and then, you know, they still, we, we'd figure out how to get their boats. These boats are not small. And so we're, we're not supposed to have boats and motorized boats on that water. And these are large twenty-one-foot V-bottomed boats that have all sorts of specialized equipment that will come out and evaluated. So if it's, the water's not there, they can actually see what we have. And then, of course, it's not all gonna go away, it's just drawing down to one side. So hopefully the fish species will, will migrate.
But we will have an opportunity with the drawdown to have, where they have an opportunity to determine the extent of sediment, the depth of sediment, how soft it is, that sort of thing?
Yeah. Except for the areas where that the water won't be completely gone. And then they can evaluate that at a later date, or we might be able to have them get them access there. I don't know yet.
Any questions, counsel, on that regarding DNR? Okay, let's go to number three, review from French Reniker of engineered work and estimates. It's on Walton Lake. It's tag team this. Yeah, so we thought it would be important in this study session to again do a review of all the places we've been. So that it just, we had another review and it was more clear for public and any questions that counsel may have had or forgotten or whatever. So I'll let you guys take it.
So just, do you want a review on the project or the report that I had? I guess I wasn't so sure what you wanted, so.
Sorry, I think the idea was that we go back and say, what did, what was discussed with committee?
Okay.
How we got to three proposals?
Okay.
Looking at the three proposals?
Okay.
You know, the three different kinds and, you know, how we arrived at a decision.
Okay. Okay, all right. Um, so I will, I'll start with the di- the different options then. Um, so the discussion on this really starts on, I don't know what page of the PDF it is, but it's on page nine of the summary report. And so upon, um, so this, the first person, I guess, on the city's side to be made aware of this situation was myself. Um, the Walton Club board members brought it to my attention and then I forwarded it on to Doug Reiner and Tom Tuhill, who's Walton rep. And through different, um, discussion during city admin report and discussion with, with Doug, we decided that you have French Reniker look at some different alternatives to look at the different cost estimates or do a preliminary cost estimate, a real, you know, very high level review of things. Um, and so I guess, and Marcus can, the two alternatives that Marcus had brought to us would be the, the culvert option. Um, and really that comes from what the East Finger has or the East Basin has, where it crosses between the two sides of the golf course. And that's kind of where that concept came up is, you know, it's, it have help happens elsewhere in the lake. So let's see about that option. Um, the bridge reconstruction, you know, replacing it as is. Um, French Reniker has experience in a lot of different trail bridges. Um, and so that was the two alternatives that were kind of initially discussed. Uh, the widening of Walton Road was actually brought to me by the water department of, hey, why, let's just take them out to Walton Road. And I said, well, let's look into the alternative because we're not gonna know if we don't look into it. So, um, and so those were the alternatives. Um, I think we talked back and forth a couple of times, like racking a rain, are there any other alternatives? Um, as far as the culvert system, um, during some of that analysis, box culverts were looked at, um, different combinations, um, using railroad cars instead of culverts. All of those were looked at. And ultimately, the option that was provided was the cheapest of all of those different options. So, I mean, even though only one was presented to the council, there's about four or five sub options in there that French Reniker.
I think, uh, um, you know, there are citizens who actually walked our, watched our meetings and some go back and look at our history of meetings. And in May of last year, it turns out that French Reniker presented three options, May thirteenth. Are you, do you, you're suggesting there was just one option presented to the council, but actually three? And Marcus presented them, right?
Right.
Okay, okay. And that included the pre-engineered bridge, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
No, but what I was saying is on the culvert, on the culvert option, um, what was presented was a number, like a number of smaller round culverts.
I just wanna go back to the point like a year ago that we presented with several options.
Yes, yeah, yeah. But on, but on the culvert option, more than just the number of culverts, I mean, box culverts were looked at, railroad cars, multiple different versions of culverts were looked at. So, uh, but the three options were looked at. Um, and so then, um, you know, Ways Property Committee made, had some discussions and I guess, I don't know how much detail you wanna go into as far as the pros and cons on that. Um, but that decision was made to move forward with the culvert option. Um, and then Ways and Means agreed to the funding. Um, one of the things then that happened when the Ways and Means agreed to the funding during that council meeting was, um, then Terry Kness brought up, had received emails from citizens regarding the, um, other versions of bridges. And, uh, so the, these are mentioned on page ten. Um, these were a couple of different bridges were looked at before we went into final design and before French Reniker's agreement was, uh, agreed upon, I guess. And really it boils down to the abutments, the sides of the, um, opening in the dam. They're the, um, one of the largest concerns on the bridge when it comes to the inspections. So something has to be done with them, whether we move forward with a bridge alternative or a culvert alternative or do nothing alternative. So the, um, couple alternatives of bridges, of slided bridges or carrion bridges, whatever you wanna, um, are not feasible without doing something to the abutments. And so, um, in my opinion, that you can either, um, to address those, either a copper dam or draining the lake still has to happen. And that was the discussion that was had is that those options are not feasible because the copper dams add additional funds, they're a safety hazard. Um, and so they, even though the estimates we had already made the bridges more expensive and then you add copper dams, they continue to add to the price.
Can you explain to everybody what a copper dam is?
Copper dam would be, um, a barricade of some sort that holds the water back so that you can work on the abutments, but without lowering the lake. Um, so again, those options were not initially presented, but they were looked at in about the one-month period between when Ways and Means made the recommendation and when the final design contract was agreed to. So then I will let Marcus talk about then the final design because the final design did modify the proposal slightly due to final calculations on the drainage area.
Yeah, so after we received, go ahead on the final design, we went out there and taped survey for the project, which allowed us to get a depth near the existing bridge and that gave us a more accurate depiction of what amount of dirt would need, be needed for this project. When we did the conceptual, kind of big overview of the project, we were just kind of guessing as best we could on what that depth would be in that area. And then after we did get the taped depth, we got more detailed on the hydrology going on and then we completely did a, like a hydraulic analysis on the pipe culvert option. And then that came to us that we needed to look a couple more culverts instead of, our initial design showed six, the proposed showed eight. Uh, the initials, that's what increased the cost of the project overall from the initial conceptual design. And then from that, we, uh, still came in under the bid of what the cost would have been that we projected for the bridge design. And, uh, just to go with the bridge design a little bit, that we did in our, kind of, when we did our bridge reconstruction option, we reached out to a prefabricated, uh, bridge contractor and they, or supplier, I mean, and they gave us a quote for what, what the bridge would cost. And then we added additional cost, wondered what it cost to get a crane in there to install the bridge. And then we assumed that, not assumed, we, addressing the abutment situation, like Melony said, those abutments need to be replaced with either a concrete or sheet piling or something along those items. And our cost estimate reflects replacing those abutments to be able to withstand that new prefabricated bridge. So that's kind of the items that we looked at and I think that's, and information included in Melony's report as well.
Can you expand on any other questions or?
I recall from our conversation, you had estimated between two fifty and three hundred thousand?
Our, our estimate was two hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Okay, that's what it was.
And then also when, for the bridge.
For the bridge.
And then also Calvin Burns did a cost estimate when they did the bridge inspection. Their estimate was two hundred and seventy-five thousand to replace the bridge. So two independent engineering firms, if we came within five percent of each other on an engineer estimate, that's pretty, pretty accurate. So that's, uh, how we feel about that.
Great, thanks for those numbers.
Uh, could you just comment on the lifespan of a bridge like that, one?
Yep.
And then, uh, maintenance and inspection costs going forward approximately?
Yeah, I didn't know about the maintenance or the inspection cost, but the, uh, the inspection cost they did, I think it was around two thousand dollars for this initial bridge inspection they did for this, uh, one here, so it'd probably be about two thousand?
I can talk on that.
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you four years.
Yeah, so, um, we, uh, the city has Calvin Burns do several of our bridges. Um, something like this because it is not the high-hazard dam and it's not on a state road and it's not over a railroad. My guess is that it would be on a four-year rotation. Um, we pay, um, to do several bridges, we pay between three and seven. And I think on the years that we have our lower numbers, we pay like three thousand and then on our, the years that we have higher number of bridges, I wanna say we pay like seven thousand. Um, so maybe it's a thousand dollars a bridge. Um, the, the, um, when Walton had theirs, Calvin Burns came down and just did one, one bridge and so they had the cost of travel and, and their, uh, report time. Whereas when Calvin Burns comes and does all of our city structures, um, they're lumping in that travel time, uh, for all of our bridges. And so, you know, a safe guess would be a thousand dollars every four years. Um, not a lot, but it would be something that, um, does, that should continue to happen. Um, and then what was your other cost of, or question?
No, um, potential maintenance costs.
Maintenance costs. Um, so on, um, and on, on the bridge, um, the bridge itself, it, um, you know, metal or, um, any of those sites, you know, is not gonna have a lot of maintenance cost. Um, I assume that we would work a lot of that into our agreement with Walton moving forward. Um, what we would be looking at from the city's responsibility would be the abutments and any of the concrete and that's really gonna, um, gonna dictate the life of it is the concrete, um, any, any part of the concrete that's associated with it. Um, that's gonna be, um, affected by free slaw and, um, that's gonna be, that's gonna dictate the life of it.
And the lifespan is about?
Um, fifty years is what we would assume. I, I think in one of my reports, uh, when these decisions were talked about. So, uh, creek bridge, now granite, different load and everything like that, but yet we're still being exposed to free slaw. Um, what had, was fifty-five years old when we, um, replaced it and it was on its last leg.
Okay, counsel, what questions do you have for Marcus or Melony regarding that topic, anything?
You said eight culverts, right?
Yes.
What size are they?
Uh, they're forty-two, forty-two and five, yes, yes. So that, yeah, slight change from the pillar, I think we did six forty-eight, then we changed it to eight forty-two, allowed for more coverage over the pipes to help hold those, uh, pipes down from floating. So that's one of the design changes.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, uh, are we feeling that, uh, one of the criticisms of this design is that maybe it's overbuilt? Do you think it's overbuilt?
Well, I'm an engineer, I don't think anything's overbuilt, but, uh, I, I guess, I'm not sure if that is, I have not seen that question, um.
I have.
Okay, all right, so.
We were accused of overbuilding the bridge on the spillway. Didn't we replace the bridge with a larger bridge at the time? We put in the central sewer and the central water.
That was before my time, but yes, I do know you did that.
Do you know that historically though?
I, I do, that is in the report, um, but, uh.
If we hadn't overbuilt, would we have been able to take fire engines and ambulances out with the thirty-five lot?
Correct, and I, and I will say, I mean, that is listed in the, in the benefits and the pitfalls of each of the options is, um, you know, a bridge has a specific width, a bridge has a specific weight load. Um, the, uh, a bridge, a bridge can be designed to meet whatever weight load that you needed to. Um, but the culverts, um, H G P E with a foot and a half covered, um, is going to be able to carry a very large load for whatever needs. Um, we can't, I mean, can't predict, um, what the need is gonna be in the lifespan. Um, even if you just assume a minimal lifespan of, and make everything equal in fifty years, we don't know what's gonna be needed to go over that, just as the bridge, um, over the primary spillway, so.
When was the causeway at number two built, the one on the east side?
Um.
Any idea?
Hmm, Steve, you know, because I would have to think really, really hard and you could probably remember quicker than me.
The causeway that runs north and south between?
I think it's always been part of the lake, but it's been rebuilt.
Yeah, it, it was redone, we put the tube in underneath of it, um, that would've been a thirty-five year, so it's been twenty, thirty years ago.
It's the ca- the causeway had, was, I mean, from, based off the historical aerial photos, it was always there, um, but the tube must've been replaced then.
Right. But we're building a causeway on, that's the plan, right? To build a causeway, not a bridge.
Right.
Where the old cart bridge is located.
Yeah.
So it looks like number two's causeway, roughly?
With more pipes, but yes. Okay, anything else, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, let's, uh, go on to our review from our city attorney.
Yeah, excuse me, I gotta use the glass here. One of the things we did, uh, basically both for the council's information and also to be sure we were right on our historical beliefs, uh, is we had several abstracts of title. Uh, they're all the same abstract that was prepared for our thirty-five lot Walton Lake subdivision that was approved by this council back in two thousand. Uh, and before that, there was an annexation and that's also shown in the abstract title. In fact, everything that's happened out at the lake since the city owned this since nineteen twenty-four is shown in an abstract title. So every one of the homeowners out at Walton Lake, uh, they have an abstract title, assuming they had a title opinion done when they bought their lot. And that abstract title reflects every single public record document over in the courthouse that affects your particular lot and also affects the lake. Um, the lake in nineteen twenty-four was deeded to the city, along with a farm, basically. And there really wasn't a lake at the time, uh, it was more like a small pond that was then built in to the reservoir that we have now. Uh, and, uh, as far as the reservoir that you have now, it's been there since the thirties. Uh, and the reservoir that's been there since the thirties, uh, became the subject of various leasing agreements with the Walton Club. The old Walton Clubhouse and the arrangements out there to start out with were a dollar a year. And the city council has always recognized that place as a pristine lake area since that happened. Uh, and the Walton Club always agreed to help, uh, with recreational activities out there. And that's been a, you know, a century-long, uh, relationship almost. Uh, the other thing that the abstract discloses to us, that over time, there have been different things that have gone on at the lake. This isn't the first time in the lake's history that there's been work done on the lake. And, uh, actually, since it's a man-made lake, you have to picture it sometime in the past when there was some water there, there were men walking around out there in waders and the lake was not as you see it today, but there was infrastructure installed out there that still is there today. There's a large pipe system that relates to interconnected reservoirs that are not in use, a surface water reservoir storage by our present potable water plant, but can be. And because of that, the DNR requires, uh, that we monitor the lake, they monitor the lake. Uh, the lake, uh, as far as the infrastructure and so forth, uh, the water department, utility department has a right of entry always under our ordinances and under state law. And in addition to that, uh, when that place was annexed, uh, and when it was subdivided, the city council and the engineer and the planners, uh, from French Reniker back then at the time, uh, and Bill Perry, the surveyor that did the plat for that place, uh, everybody felt that we should have a riparian easement so that the utilities could always count on accessing anything that's under the surface of the water out there. So there's some kind of misconception right now that that lake, uh, maybe came like an amenity or something of a common area like you'd get if you bought an interest in a condominium. It don't work like that. Uh, that lake has always been owned by the city, it's always been regulated by the DNR. The lake is there for your recreation and enjoyment, but it's subject to a very, very enforceable easement along the whole shoreline. Uh, and it says in the abstract, it's a minimum of ten feet, uh, for access of the utilities and the use of the city. That's also there so somebody can walk around with his fly rod and not get in trouble with each of the individual lots, uh, that happen to butt up against the lake. Uh, and it's also there so that if somebody wants to pull their kayak up on shore and take a rest, they can. But the lake itself has several covenants. They're all in everybody's abstract and they basically tell you what you cannot do at that lake, partly because the DNR always expected those from the time of annexation and partly because the DNR, um, continues to work with us every time we have something going on where people have to get in the lake and work on it. Uh, so the lake itself has always been owned completely by the city. The city has the, uh, final say on the lake. Uh, that's not intended to say that you're not entitled as homeowners in a subdivision that's on a lake to enjoy the lake every day. You can go down, use the same riparian easement around the lake that everybody else, uh, has. Uh, you have a right to enjoy the view, you have a right to canoe or kayak, uh, do the things that are permitted. There are several things that aren't permitted, you can't swim in the lake. Uh, DNR's frowned on that always long before we had the subdivision. Uh, you, uh, basically, as far as activities in the lake that stir the, uh, water in a way that either is damaging to the vegetative part of the lake or is damaging to things on the bottom of the lake, uh, that kind of, uh, activity causes motorboats not to be allowed there ever. Uh, but other than that, canoeing, kayaking, uh, I suppose, uh, I call them bass floats, but some of these styrofoam things where people can fish off of something that is un-motorized, uh, they're allowed, and I think I've seen them out there before. Um, I've fished every square inch of the riparian right away out there in fifty years. Uh, it's a nice lake, it's got good fish in it. It's also had dead fish in it about four or five times since nineteen twenty, or nineteen thirty-one. Uh, and things have had to be worked on out there and I really, uh, I've been bothered as far as responding to some of the things that you've been told at the prior meetings, uh, at the idea that the city hasn't always encouraged the most recreation. uh, at the idea that the city hasn't always encouraged the most recreational use and tried to, in good faith, always preserve the lake. But sometimes it's a, it's just a fact of life. If you work on a water project, especially if you've got infrastructure below the surface, you're gonna have to do something. People don't work on this with, uh, diving masks and that kind of equipment. They lower the water level and they go in with waders at parts of the infrastructure. Some places, they don't have to do that because it's more accessible. But as far as the lake itself, the lake is very vibrant. It's always come back and the council's interest, every council going through right now has been that that lake will be preserved. When I read things in the paperwork that says, "We're gonna ruin the lake forever, we're gonna have a complete environmental disaster," and that the state-level D N R should halt us from working on something that we've always completely owned, completely controlled, and done a good job, always, of looking out for the lake continuity, um, I take offense. So at this point, I want you to be assured as homeowners out there, that this lake isn't going to go away. This lake is not gonna be damaged environmentally forever. The D N R people that, uh, are usually over our shoulder while we're doing these projects, um, they have always been helpful, and they're gonna be just as helpful this time too. I have no doubt that the conversations that our city administrator has had with them about things that are available for restoration, uh, when the lake is worked on, uh, things that are available as far as restocking, as far as fish that might die, uh, those are things that happen. This state's got over a thousand bodies of water that the D N R manages. Believe me, that's the only place that's possibly gonna have some fish killed to fix the lake and the bridge. Uh, and it's been that way other times. We've had drawdowns when we worked on the spillway, we've had drawdowns when we did the bridge replacement. We've had situations where one part of the lake we had to work on. Some of these different kinds of dams that let you get in to a particular area and work on something in one area, we opt for those if we can use them, but sometimes you can't. Uh, and it doesn't change the fact that the lake's still gonna be restored as a lake. It doesn't change the fact that D N R's gonna be over our shoulder, and it doesn't change the fact that D N R will help us also with the fishing and so forth. I, I thoroughly enjoy fishing myself. I know there's some other people I've talked to that, uh, have that experience out there at the lake. And, uh, I don't think you're gonna lose a fishery. I think if D N R helps with restock and so forth, they'll also be surveying the lake. You'll have a better fishery by the time we're all done with this. So I'm not worried about that being an environmental disaster. I'm thinking probably an environmental improvement as far as some of the fish quality there. Uh, so I don't want you to be worrying about the fish. Fish manage to survive anyway.
Smell.
Uh, well, yeah, there's.
The smell's gonna be horrible.
Yeah.
A lot of fish out there, and if the whole thing's empty, they're gonna die.
I, I hear you, and I don't think that necessarily the engineers have said the whole thing's gonna be completely empty. Uh, it'll be low, uh, but there's spots in that lake, there's pools. Uh, not every, I mean, I've, I've walked across the Des Moines River when it was six inches deep, but then I caught catfish out of pools down there. Fish are a little more resilient than you're giving them credit for. Uh, but that's not what this is about. The bridge is something that's necessary for human use. The fish restocking is something that D N R will work with us on. Uh, parts of the problem here though too are that, um, when you do things with the D N R at various levels, we have a very good, uh, personable relationship with our D N R people in this part of the state. And as Doug told you, they've been down and visited with us. We were hopeful maybe one would be here tonight, uh, but as far as D N R viewing what we're doing as dangerous to the environment, that's the last thing I believe D N R thinks. Uh, as far as what we're doing as far as a long-term solution, D N R's gonna keep its hands out of this. D N R would like to, uh, have use of the lake for their survey as far as both a subsurface topography, mapping of the lake, and a fish survey. Uh, and I don't know if there's anything else, Doug, or not, but my recall is that, um, we didn't see any problem with them doing that, except for the fact that we have a prohibition, uh, by our own city rules about putting any boats on it, uh, that are motorized. And my guess is that D N R's, even with electric motors, they're gonna be bigger than we're used to on that lake. But D N R, basically, I believe they have the authority, they can come in and tell us what they wanna do, instead of asking for permission about what they wanna do. Uh, and I think that will be for everybody's betterment if they do those surveys and have that to help with the restoration, the restocking, and those kinds of questions going forward. So, uh, that's all consistent with a good faith effort by the council to do the lake as a continuing, uh, recreational, uh, and entertainment source as well as backup reservoir. But that, as well as backup reservoir, uh, is essential as far as dealing with, uh, D N R. Um, uh, I've been involved since Bob Parkin was city attorney back in the eighties. And this isn't the first time that people that lived out at Walton Lake came in to see the council or the council went out to see them. Uh, in the late eighties, there were problems with D N R being bothered by something called seepage. And the seepage was because some of the septics behind the cabins that were out there that people paid a hundred dollars a year to lease a patch of land for, um, they had homemade septic systems in some of them. And the seepage, no matter how it was supposed to be directed, some of it was being detected in the lake. And D N R was furious with us. In the nineties, D N R came down and made demands. Uh, in the nineties, I was the city attorney, Bob, Bob Parkin had retired. Uh, and different people from the group that were cottage, uh, lot renters out there at the time met again. Uh, and they were afraid of the D N R solution. The D N R solution at that time was, you got eighteen or twenty of these cabins out here on lots you ran a hundred dollars a year. This could just as easily be a meadow if you're not really willing to fix the seepage problem uh, and do something about central water as well as central sewer. Uh, and at that time, uh, it was sort of a standoff for a while as far as, uh, uh, the lot owners out there. The city council was faced with a question about whether they were going to cancel leases. The leases for everybody out there were up in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, most of the people out there that had a hundred dollar a year deal, uh, they still wanted to live on the lake. So the council at that time came up with a plan, and it's what you got today. Your, your homes out there and your lots were the part of a solution to put in a centralized sewer system and a centralized water system, and make, uh, that cost efficient by selling lots that covered back, uh, the cost of that infrastructure. It also involved taking out old septic, filling in makeshift tanks or removing tanks, uh, and assuring, uh, the D N R that there was no reason not to allow people to reside on the edge of the lake. Uh, and that's, that meant the posture back then, twenty, twenty-five years ago. We had to go through some other hoops to get you what, uh, is a very nice subdivision out there. Uh, you have, uh, what I call a corridor annexation out there. The Burlington Northern Railway, we had to mess around with them for about a year because it's basically your extension of the city limits boundary from what is uptown by the high school, going back in the direction of Walton. Uh, and corridor annexation is frowned on, very much so, uh, by the city development board. In fact, they've turned us down another place where we wanted to do corridor annexation up by our airport and use Highway One as a corridor to treat as adjacent city property that would touch on property up there that we wanted to annex. So it doesn't always work, but anyway, the Burlington Northern Railway was willing to cooperate with us and let us have their right-of-way basically to treat as the corridor out to Walton. Uh, and that whole subdivision, at that point, became a part of the city limits of, uh, Fairfield. And subdivision was the next step after it was an addition to the city. So that took us a year, year and a half to get there, and then we did the subdivision. And the other thing that was a standard for all of you that have abstracts, uh, was we allowed the people, one at a time, that were going to stay out there in their cabins, uh, to meet with Bill Perry from French Rentecor and draw the lot lines for a lot that they were gonna have a cabin on. We expected everybody out there to improve their cabin to the point where it complied with our city zoning code, building size requirements. There isn't anything out there right now that doesn't comply with our zoning code as far as building size requirements. We also had, uh, one massive jigsaw project out there as far as getting the lots organized the way they are in the subdivision plat right now, so that the lots complied with our city ordinance as far as lot size. Every one of your lots out there is compliant with our zoning ordinance. They weren't when they were a hundred dollars a year.
Hey, John.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you, but we have one minute, basically now till seven o'clock. And so, uh, we do wanna start the council meeting on time, 'cause we've got a long meeting. So hopefully you got in all your most important points.
Well, I'm just gonna say that the, the lots that are out there in that subdivision paid for the infrastructure, almost a million dollars worth of it, by the time we sold all the lots. The city council attitude about that place as a continuing lake and as a nice place to live is still the same as it was fifty years ago. Still the same as the time that we had it subdivided and put it up for sale. So please understand, the city's not against you on that, alright?
Okay, so that will conclude our work session. Council, do you, and does anybody need a break, or, yes? Okay, two-minute break. Uh, first up is Tom Tarian, and, uh, so go ahead, Tom.
Hey, well, um, I was here once before and I just wanted to just kinda do a timeline. Because Connie, the last meeting you had, you kept saying, "Where were you, where were you, where were you?" Well, I was, I was here before this, these decisions were made. And I had inquired on them, and I'm gonna read this str- string of emails, um, mainly because I kind of represent now the entire Walton Lake community out here. Um, you may, you know, it was interesting, I was reading the report from the D N R that came in just at the last minute, Doug, you were kind enough to send it out. And the first of the stakeholders that they listed were landowners. And a little history on Walton is when I bought the lot back in two thousand and four, um, I was one of the first to do it, and it was kind of fun, we had to have a, an auction. I paid for what I thought I was gonna get, and we had to auction the lot off and ended up getting another lot. The point is, I built a house there, um, and now there are, and I'd be interested to do the study to see how much, how much in taxes, this program that you outlined very well, um, as far as the improvements that were done in that community, there are thirty-five lots for sale. I think that the, the tax revenues there now and the, and the adjacent property over across the lake and the, across the street that uses the Walton Lake su- uh, sewer, um, is over two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And it's a far cry from what it was in two thousand and four. So we had, it has built up to the very beautiful community. Um, the thing was that what happened was, and I'm gonna read these to you, and I'm sorry, Terry, you're, you're, you picked the short straw on this one because you're, you're our Walton Lake representative. Um, but it's, and this is basically the way it went. Um, Terry, I've been informed by a neighbor, and this is on September twenty-third, uh, by a neighbor, you were planning to drain the lake in October, which I thought that was the rumor, to repair a bridge on the golf course.
Tom, what year is this?
Twenty twenty-four. Um, how many feet down is it going to go? And I, and I'm surprised why we were not notified of this. Have you checked with the D N R? Is there going to be adequate amount of water remaining for the fish and other wildlife? The last thing we want is a lot of dead fish. Thanks for your reply. We're at twenty-two seventy-three Walton Lake Drive. Um, Terry did respond that evening in nine twenty-five. Hi, hi, Tom, we are not at that point yet. It has not been decided even how to proceed at this point. We'll keep you posted. Now, Terry, at that point, you did know of three options. Um, this was in, this was in, uh, September of twenty-three. It's just, the more information that we can, we have, the more that we can cogitate how we can offer ideas to you about how to do this. The only, the main thing I wanted was not to see the lake drained.
You said September twenty-three, yeah, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. September twenty-three.
September twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Alright, thank you. Okay, then, I hadn't heard anything.
Tom, I was just gonna mention that property committee last year in twenty-four was Flornoy, Gandy, and Esti. So Terry wasn't on the property committee at that time.
No, this was the Ways and Means, I understand.
Okay, she was on Ways and Means, but not property.
So then, then I measured, I measured, then I, on October third, twenty twenty-four, I measured, I went out and measured the existing bridge, um, found it was six feet by seventy-two feet. Yes, the, the areas on the end needed, needed attention. Um, the, but I did point out that Michael Porter had a forty-eight-foot bridge up on his land that had a nine-thousand-pound breaking load that went across the Crow Creek. And I invited anybody and everybody to go down and look at it. Mike was more than happy to show it. Um, point is, is that that weight load is more than enough to service as a golf cart bridge. Granted, it's not gonna get a rescue vehicle across it, but there's plenty of other ways to get to somebody that they're having problems. Um, then at, on October, this is the important thing, that Terry, on October fourteenth, you sent me a response back from that October third email, saying, "This is great information, Tom, thanks for sharing. I'll pass it along." That's the last I've heard of this. The point is, is that when I, I, you know, like everybody has family, it has things that go on in life, and I'm sure everyone here does, and I, my heart goes out to everyone of you running this, running this city. But the point is, I've never received any information relative to what you had decided. But in fact, on the fourteenth of October, the, the leaning was towards the culvert. And then at nine thirty, Terry, you, you emailed me saying, "Great information, I'll pass it along." It would've been helpful to know that you were leaning towards the culvert. Because we then have multiple city residents out at Walton Lake that I know very well, and I bring them in on the discussion. All of this wouldn't have, wouldn't even have happened, it would've happened in a proper timeframe. And I, you know, and I take offense to the idea that, well, Tom Tarian presented some bridge idea, but nobody called me back. I mean, come on, there, first of all, it was an organ company, they, they, they're two hours before him. Did Rentecor try to call him at eight in the morning or nine in the morning? He may have been asleep. I don't, honestly, I don't know, and I'm not gonna, that's not my finger pointing at this point. It's just being included in the conversation is my point. And it's just like, you know, nobody called him back, that's the way I feel. Nobody got back to me. Nobody gave me any information, posting any relevant information based on my ultimate concern in the beginning was I didn't want the lake drained. And that's, that's pretty much the deal, that I was here, I was waiting for you guys to work with me.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it. Um, any questions for Tom, council?
So, Tom, you, your first email was in September, is that right?
Yeah, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
How did you know to contact someone in September twenty-four?
Well, if you heard, I had been informed by a neighbor, you're planning to drain the lake. It could've been one of the golfers, I, I'm familiar with the folks there. Uh, but again, the landowners, see, these are landowners. We're not, oh, we're not golfers that were intrinsically tied to this bridge. We're the people that live and, and prosper on that, on the lots that surround the lake. We enjoy it, I mean, we've in, we've invested millions of dollars in the properties out there.
So you heard by word of mouth?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you look at any city council posting or any notice of the city council meetings?
I, I turned to my Ward One person.
Is there?
Is there, let me ask you something.
Is there a board?
Can I?
Is there a Walton board?
It's a Walton, no, there's no, there's no homeowners association.
Is there a Walton board? Like a Walton Club board or something like that?
Not that I'm a member of.
Yeah, the club and the lay, layman.
If you're, if you're a member of it, I'm not a member of the Walton. The point is, it's, you folks are representatives for me, it's as if you're, you're, I'm sitting in your chair. And that's, that's the way I felt the city is run. It's a representative government. And all I'm looking. And all I'm looking at is just, I was given no information. And as a result, I could've guided everyone else in here that is a resident out there, because they're now concerned, and they're just wondering, well, how did this happen?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Point is well taken, any question?
Tom, Tom, yeah, I appreciate the way you've stayed on this, and I've been listening closely. Let's say that the DNR and the city engineering pair, the French Rennecker Insights and the city engineer, after a survey of the lake, and after a survey of the fish population, they think the lake's gonna be better if it's drained. Isn't that a decision that belongs to the council?
It, it is, but it's also, it should be, we should be readily informed, because of where, when we came out here, when you, when you sold us these lots, the first thing you featured was Walton Lake lots. And all I'm getting at is, we, we bought into that, and I appreciate, we, we've enjoyed it being there. But it's just, just like the DNR said, the first stakeholder is the landowner. Now, as far as being informed, yeah, you have your rules as far as how the city works. There's, it's kinda antiquated, quite frankly, in terms of being able to get the word out. People are not tied to newspapers anymore. A newspaper, what, comes out once a week?
Twice.
Twice? Yeah, well, okay, the point is, it's just, people are more email-oriented, and there's even a discussion coming up relative to that. And another thing that's come up, and I will present it to Terry again, because she's my Ward One person, is the irrigation issue. And, you know, I've been talking to Larry Paget about that, and it's, you know, there's a hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons of water a day that's being used out of that lake. And there's an eight-inch pipe that comes out and supplies over sixty homes off of that, off of that spigot. And I'm wondering what my water pressure's gonna be like now, if you give that away. Plus, if you sell it, it's, it's one thing, but if you're giving it away, that's a resource that we paid for to get processed. So, all of this is stuff to think about, and I appreciate your time, but I also just understand, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that communication wasn't coming both ways.
Thank you, Tom, appreciate it. Next is Vesna Lovina. Hope I spelled, said your name correctly.
Thank you. So, just as you said, my name is Vesna Lovina. And I'm going to read because I'm shy.
So what ward are you in?
I'm in Ward One.
Okay, and do you live at the old lake?
No.
Okay, okay. Just speak loudly so people can hear you. And get closer to the mic, there you go.
Got it, will that do?
Yeah, I think that's better.
Good. So, there's not much I can say about myself, except that I have spent tens of thousands of hours walking Fairfield's park and trail system, delighting in its beauty and its diversity. Does my love for this treasure qualify me to speak to you today? I don't know, but it has certainly made me bold. So I'd like to start with the obvious truth, that all life is precious. We all know this, yet it needs addressing, because the system we operate in is falling short on the standards we take for granted in our personal lives. I cannot imagine that any of you are prepared to confide, truly confide to your beautiful, magical children and grandchildren, that you are determined to carry out a death sentence on tens of thousands of creatures and a beautiful, innocent lake that has only ever brought joy and upliftment to the city of Fairfield. And that, in the matter of replacing a bridge across Walton Lake, you are willing to spend vastly more of the city's money on an option that kills the lake than it would cost to install a bridge that allows it to live. Fairfield is incredibly blessed with the legacies of those who had the wisdom, vision, and generosity of spirit to make it a place so richly endowed with natural beauty for all to enjoy. Walton Lake is a gem in the garland of Fairfield's park and trail system. Killing it squanders our treasure on every possible level. It destroys life needlessly. It sacrifices the economic benefits of mature ecosystems, both tangible and intangible. It trashes our history. It destroys the public trust. It dismisses the passion and contribution of our most creative and devoted citizens, and it sets an example for man's relationship with the natural world, which is not only outdated, but unconscionable. If we're going to invoke history, as members of the council have suggested, let us recall the oral constitution of the Iroquois Confederacy, which states that in every deliberation, we must consider the impact on the seventh generation. Killing a lake for no good reason betrays the very soul of the indigenous peoples who loved and revered this land and its waters long before us. Killing a lake is nothing like pressing an off button. Bringing it back to life is nothing like pressing that button back on. We take for granted that nature will always spring back to life. The communities will do the same, but beyond a certain point, they don't. Ecosystems collapse. Carrying citizens disengage or get angry. I'm no paragon, but I was taken by surprise at how angry I felt when the council invoked procedure to justify destroying a lake, when it blamed those who failed to stay its hand by a certain date as grounds for persisting on a dreadful course of action, when it covered for its failure to clearly inform the public of its plans to drain Walton Lake. The social fabric is built on our contract with the divine in us, and equally, on our contract with the natural world. Once we start treating life as a thing of no account, to, to the point that a massive fish kill receives no mention at all, as it did last two weeks ago, it's time to course correct. Process and money can serve life or destroy it. Let us yoke both to the goodwill and well-being of all. Whatever errors have brought us to this point, we've ended up with something almost nobody wants. Yes, your job is often thankless, and you'll never please everybody. But now is the time to reach across the dais and partner with a passionate majority to forge community, collaboration, true bonds of affection, and a good solution for Walton Lake. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak.
James Centon? So, thank you for allowing us, I appreciate it. I have a master's level degree in ecology, and I've taught ecology at our local university for many years. I've also founded ten organizations on three continents. And I also represented the university on Mayor Ed Malloy's Go Green Initiative committee. So I've got a lot of stakes in the environment. Draining Walton Lake means much more than most people think, because ecology's hardly ever taken into account, certainly very little by the DNR, very sadly. But we would destroy complex ecological networks that support the life of the lake. It'll take years, we just heard, actually, the DNR stating it could take fifteen to twenty years to restore a drained lake. They said it, Doug Reinhart just read it out. So, we would like to think about, what is the impact of this? Where are we now? Where is mankind? But it turns out that we are actually racing into the sixth major monetary extinction event faster than any previous extinction event. That's pretty shocking, I don't know how many of you know that, that we're actually going faster than when we wiped out the dinosaurs. And that isn't something that's small. You can read a lot of scientific papers that will confirm that. It's been around for twenty years now. And recovery after that has taken millions, tens of millions of years. And by the way, it turns out that where, where's humanity gonna be with this big extinction event? Probably we have less than a century left, and there'll be no humans left. Okay, so if we carry on like this, that's where we're going. And it turns out that if we destroy the lake, we will be enhancing that extinction event, quite substantially. Now, how can that be? It's just some fish dying, what's that? Oh, yes? Well, it turns out it is a very healthy, resilient lake, as we heard. And many Iowa communities do not have that good luck. And it, because of the fact that Iowa has a lot of agricultural stresses that get into the water. And so it's not so easy just to recover a lake if you do destroy it. The mature ecology of Walton Lake is the basis for its native resilience, because of complex ecological feedback loops. And this will take years, as we heard. It turns out that if we do destroy this, it's gonna be very different to emptying a swimming pool and throwing it up again, because it means rebuilding a very complex living system. That's why it takes fifteen to twenty years. Once our lake ecosystem has been so affected, we are going to lose thousands of species, right? Thousands of species, not to mention tens of thousands of creatures that will die and decay. That's what we'll be doing. But we won't be able to fix it so quickly, because we have deteriorated the support network, ecological support network on this planet to such an extent that restoration is much worse now than it was even fifteen years ago. Okay, so we're not just in the same age as we were fifteen years ago, never mind a hundred years. So we better understand how this works. It's all to do with the lake food web. I don't know how many of you have ever studied the lake food web. It's not just about fishes. It's a complex environment. And what you have is mutually supporting diverse life forms. We have a wide variety of them, birds, mammals, fish, amphibians, invertebrates, including insects, algae, bacteria, and fungi. All of these are vital. If we don't have them, we don't have ecological balance. And if we don't have that, human activities like walks in nature, bird watching, kayaking, and fishing are gonna be affected. An important example is aquatic insects, which feed nearly the full range of vertebrate and invertebrate predators found in the lake. And it turns out that their ecology, community structure, predator-prey interactions, their tritus feeding, that's feeding on the stuff at the bottom of the lake that's rotting, their grazing, and the implications for nutrient dynamics are all critical parts of a living lake, which are almost never taken into account when people drain the lake. Algae obviously are the primary producers, they're the ones that produce the food. Bacteria and fungi.
So James, that's your five minutes. Can you wrap it up with a couple sentences, please?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what it amounts to is that if the lake is drained, we will lose a lot of species. There will be a lot more cost than we thought, and it's going to take many, many years to restore the beauty and wonder of that lake. So I would suggest that we look at other options, especially now that some have emerged, which appear to be less expensive. And I would suggest that we take that. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, James, do you, what ward do you live in, by the way?
One, sorry.
Are you a lake resident?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
Is this a wall or a desk? My name is Ed Hip, I'm in the fourth ward, represented by the magnificent Matthew Rowe. Thank you, Ed. I'm here because I would like to make a proposal. It really dovetails on what Tom Tarian was saying. Tom is one of the most outstanding citizens in this town, and he doesn't feel incorporated into the decision-making process of the city council. Sometimes, we want to focus on what we want, but sometimes nature says, "I'm going to put in front of you what you don't want, so that it's clear what you do want." I've seen many things in this issue that I don't want. And it starts with you, Connie, two weeks ago. I had to, I had to be with my dear mayor, saying, "I'm frustrated about the gap that I feel between me and my citizens." I had to hear a citizen say last two weeks ago, he didn't feel, they didn't feel safe in this town, for other reasons than this, but that was the issue. I believe we're feeling the issue of safety now, too. People feel here that they're not being collaborated with by their representatives. We can set the bar really low, take the lawyer's advice, that it's the bare legal minimum that the city is responsible for in terms of being in touch with the citizens. But that's not up to the standards of Fairfield. Why would we ever go with what's the bare legal minimum for anything in this glorious town? Why would we not want to be eager to reach out as soon as something's being considered here, even at the smallest, tenderest little, "Maybe we could do this"? Why not reach out and determine who are the impacted citizens? And eagerly say, "We think maybe you might not like this. We wanna hear what you say, because you may have facts that we don't know." I asked representatives to go walk the bridge, who had been telling me one thing. They went and walked the bridge, and they came back telling me, "Oh my God, there's stuff we don't know that's going on out there." It's a totally different deal. There's no ambulances driving across that little cart path. And yet that was one of the cornerstone issues here. So I'm proposing that this city change its deepest ethos, that this is not a wall between you and us, that there is a bridge between us, and that bridge would be a fully chartered, fully empowered office of some kind that sole job is to be constantly looking and seeing what is government wanting to do in this town, and seeing who would be impacted most directly by it, and reaching out to them. There are apps for this, there are other cities that have programs for this. I believe Doug Reinhardt, you live in, came from a town, Fort Arthur, that has one of these programs?
Yeah.
So we can start by asking you to check out with them. What do they do to make sure that this kind of thing, where we're feeling like it's us against you, and you're feeling like, "Here's an angry mob here to lynch us"? It doesn't have to happen that way. But we'd have to be eagerly seeking out opposite opinions to ours. So I'm calling it, I'm changing the name, it's the Citizens Impact Assessment and Engagement Office. Not just notify us, bring us in. You've got somebody like Tom Tarian who lives there, and you don't try to, and knows real estate, and don't try to get him in here to help in the very beginning stages of the whole thing, then we're gonna end up with this. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed, appreciate that. David Runyon?
Hi, my name is David Runyon, fifth ward resident. I'm a recreational fisherman. I enjoy fishing all of our ponds and lakes here in Fairfield. And I would have to say that Walton Lake is my favorite place to fish. I think it has the healthiest fishing population in the city. In attending some of these city council meetings, I've met fellow fishermen, recreational fishermen, one of whom has said it has the best fishing population in southeast Iowa, which is something I think that we should be proud of. I have a, I generally kayak fish, and so when I'm out on Walton Lake, I'll pop the kayak in at the public parking and make my way to the main lake underneath the bridge. I have a fish finder, which is a depth finder, and so I'm able to check the depths of the water in various areas of the lake. I had a visual aid that I submitted to our loper at the city of Fairfield, Iowa. I guess it didn't make it. But it's just a map of the lake, and I can easily describe it. So the lake, if you wanna think of the bridge on the lake is going from southwest to northeast, the, the bridge cuts off the lake in about one-third section and a two-thirds section, what I call the main lake. The one-third section is where the public parking is, and that whole. And that whole area of the lake, the lake bed, is at eleven feet.
We actually have the, is that what you're talking about there?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Yep, I've got it.
Yeah, so it's, okay, great, thank you. So that section's at eleven feet. And, great, there it is. And so when we get to the bridge, the depth stays at eleven feet. And then within about fifteen feet of the bridge, it starts to slope off into about thirteen feet of water. There was an area I have in the green where it's one small hole that goes down to just over fourteen feet, as I noted. But I was all over that lake and couldn't find anything else deeper than thirteen feet. It's remarkably flat when you get to the bottom of the lake bed. So what I want to bring to you guys' attention is that if we do drain the lake, there's going to be nothing left. Even if we were only to drain it to the eleven-foot level somehow, which I would assume would be difficult because you would need heavy equipment on, I assume, the south and east portion of the bridge in order to put things together on that side. So even if you were to only drain it down at the eleven-foot level, two feet of water, I mean, I don't need, we don't have to talk about dissolved oxygen to understand that July and August is not going to support fish, you know, the trophy fish that we have in this lake surviving in two feet of water in the hottest months of summer. I don't know what you're going to do with this information. I was really hoping to see the DNR report. I guess unfortunately they couldn't be here. Obviously, they're going to have a much better chart than what I have here. But I was a bit surprised to find how consistent the lake depths are in terms of just being very flat once you get into the deep part of the lakes. So the other thing that this brings up is, and this has been briefly discussed, is the irrigation of the golf course. If the lake is drained, and there's really nothing left or substantially nothing left, it's going to be a big drain on our public water system. I spoke to Ed Hip, asked him about the Fairfield Golf and Country Club, how they irrigate their golf course. They use, if I'm understanding correctly, reclaimed sewer water that's been filtered, and so that doesn't come out of the aquifer. So what we're talking about is, you know, one hundred and thirty thousand gallons of water a day coming out of our public water supply for months or longer just to water the golf course, to keep the golf course alive. Which is going to be a financial cost as well as a cost ecologically. And so in addition to ruining one of my favorite recreational activities, you're going to, you know, put a great burden on our water supply, which I'm not qualified to speak about. But I just, you know, wanted to say, just to sum up, that this is my favorite place to fish. And sadly, here they might be going away.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Ed Noise. I'm also in Ward One about Walton Lake, so I know it quite well. I go there every morning and look at it. The biggest thing that happened was on October the fourteenth. And it was reported that staff looked into lower-cost options dropped to the city by citizens, not as Tom Tarian's offer. It's admitted that it was lower cost than what was being discussed, which was the covert idea. However, this option would not meet the weight limit needed to meet the requirements of the course's activities. That was incorrect. It was more than adequate to meet the needs of a golf cart bridge. So the only thing that that makes any sense is if you're looking at the covert idea, which is the emergency vehicle analysis. The emergency vehicle analysis is not supported by anyone today. That analysis was never valid. And yet it's what the city council considered as extremely important in their decision-making. And go back, I watched all the hearings. I saw everything they talked about. So that was the main reason why the covert was chosen, because you could get emergency vehicles, completely unnecessary, impractical, and all of that. Part of the problem with the Drish thing is, for the emergency vehicle thing and the covert, is you have to destroy the walkway getting to the, getting to the little bridge part. So if you go with the golf cart bridge, you're only looking at two abutments. You're not looking at destruction of all of the sidewalks, which are in great condition. So one thing we did is we filed a petition to the, the DNR. We filed a petition to the DNR to stop this. And that's why they're not draining the lake, because they are looking at it again. Another big problem was, is that it was admitted that the depths of the lake was inaccurately given by our city engineer. She admitted it in the last public hearing. She even offered her license. Well, that was a big deal, because even the DNR didn't know that we were going to have to drain the entire lake. So now we know, because we have the actual readings of it, we know exactly how much we're going to have to drain. We're going to have to drain the entire lake, which will kill all the fish. The DNR didn't know it, the city council didn't know it, and yet these decisions were being made. The other thing we obviously pointed out was, nobody knew of the impact it was going to have on the golf course. It wasn't even discussed until the last meeting. Now we're talking about three million gallons of water that needs to come out of the aquifer. The aquifer's already draining. They're already talking about having to do another one. It's millions and millions of dollars. That is the water that we use for our public needs. So that was a solution that was proposed at the last meeting, but those costs have not been factored in. That's a significant cost that needs to be added on to the two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand that the bid is currently at. And it also doesn't discuss the cost of all of the piping. Further, nobody discussed the fact that it was going to forever cut off the access for the fishermen. So none of this was discussed or considered at any point in the relevant decision-making. A big problem, and that's why the DNR is holding off. They have a duty to everyone, including us, all the people that live there, et cetera. If you look at the petition that was given, made by the city to get the permit, one of the questions that's asked, "The addresses of adjoining property owners, lessees, et cetera, whose property adjoins the water body. If more than can be entered here, please attach a supplemental list." No response. In other words, the DNR was not given the names of anybody that lived there. The reason why they asked for the names is because if they're going to do something egregious to the water, they have to let the property owners know. They have the right to protest the permit application. We never got those notices. Obviously, we didn't get anything from the city. And I have to say this. We lost the Fairfield ledger. The ledger was one of our main news sources. Right now, we just have the Southeast Iowa Union, which is a three-city thing. So we barely, anybody hardly ever looks at it. And you rarely get anything about their importance. To this day, there's been nothing about this important matter, still not ever in the paper. That shows you how ineffectual the paper is. We also lost the news reporting at the local radio station. They don't do that anymore. And we also lost the Weekly Reader. So we don't have the traditional means of the people saying, "So you can forgive us and forgive you for us not knowing." It's a mutual forgiveness thing that we're doing here right now. That's actually what happened. There was another question that, "Will this impact a letoral by a lake or riparian landowner?" It was specifically said, "No." That's false. Obviously, it affected all of its landowners. Letoral meant adjoining property owners. So the application to the DNR was incorrectly applied for. The fact that the city or the engineer admitted that a lower-cost option had been submitted refused what was said earlier about the bridge idea was a higher cost. They admitted to it in their own paperwork. So even if it's high, let's assume it costs more money for the bridge, would it?
Can you wrap up?
Yes, even if it does. The people offered, we offered the city money to have a fundraiser, because we care so much about this. We sent out a memorandum of agreement, offering to be open source. Everyone's conciliatory, everyone's working together. We'll even put the money in their trust. We want to help, we want to help the city, we want to get over this problem. No response. So not, we care so much about this that we're willing to actually raise money out of our pockets that many people don't even have. That's how much we care about this. So we have options. And when I said it, I said, "This is a vision. You look at it, a vision of cooperation, love, and celebration." We have an opportunity in this community to do something that's amazing. It's almost impossible, and I've been told this by former city council members, to get any changes ever done at the city council level. Once they're done, once they said they did it, they're never going to stop, they'll never be able to change. I don't believe that. I don't believe that. I will never believe that. I believe that we can change. If we put love in our hearts, and we care, and we look at the animals, and the fish, and everyone else, we can change. Thank you.
And Hal, if you can tell us where you live?
Yep.
Or what ward do you live in?
First ward. I'm also a golfer, which is another form of addiction. But I'm a member of the Walton Club. I may be wrong about something. Connie, can I ask a question? How much of this covert idea is based on the need to move emergency vehicles over the causeway?
Well, I can't put a percentage on it. I think the, I think the thought was, "We don't know what the future holds." And so from the city's standpoint, I think they regularly look at, they try to be as broad as possible to say what's possible. And should we consider that? And I think that's what the council did. Because they don't know. I mean, I think we do know, what we do know, we do have two golf courses in this town. And we do know that often on those golf courses have struck a little bit, you know? And so can they stay viable the next fifty, a hundred years? We, I don't know if anybody knows that. So I think that's where the thought, that thought process came up. And, you know, the council can chime in if you think that's different. So.
My recollection is, I don't know where that idea came from or who raised it first. I do not think it was the city engineer. It might have been a committee member who asked that question.
I'm not sure.
Terry, you might remember.
There was also discussion about not just emergency vehicles, but maintenance vehicles. I was around when they were removing two old cabins that were out in the first green area, or the first hole area. Yeah, they were taking across that bridge backwards. And if we'd had a pickup, it would have been a heck of a lot easier.
Okay, so let's not go there, okay?
Go ahead, Hal.
I'd like to say, though, I just remember, I remember that being, the bridge that we're putting in is strung it up to hold emergency vehicles. I don't think that was a reason for that bridge. They were just giving an example of how sturdy or how strong that bridge was going to be.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
The reason I asked is because, and as Larry was just pointing out, there's a lot of access to that golf course from Walton Road and Walton Lake Drive. And if you had to move a vehicle across that causeway, even if you fill in the bridge and put a causeway, that vehicle is not going to move nearly as fast or as safely as it can move down Walton Drive, Walton Lake Drive, and Walton Road. So it seems to me that you really don't have a need to support anything heavier than a golf cart across that area because of the roads that are so close there. I did turn in supporting documents. Is it possible to put that up?
Yeah, I think they're there.
Thanks. Good, so right there, you know, if, I assume that councils have all been out to the course. But as you can see, right there, you've got, the causeway is parallel to Walton Road. Any emergency vehicles are going to come from Walton Road, from the west. They're going to have access to any place on that golf course off of three access points off of Walton Road. They wouldn't be crossing the causeway. And to get down to the causeway from over in the parking area and where the clubhouse is, you'd have to rebuild that road, which would probably cost you more than the causeway's going to cost you. So I'm here basically to bring attention to, really, the question in my mind is, why are we spending all this money on a causeway when a bridge would be less expensive, more practical, and do the job we need?
Well, Hal, I can only tell you what we heard from our engineers. And that was, the causeway was the least expensive of the estimates that they got on all those, on the options. So, and that's really what it came down to. And yes, we know that Ed and Tom have come up with what they believe to be lower costs. Even with those costs, again, I'm not an engineer. I've been told that we might need bigger abutments. We might still have to, we would still have to lower the lake. So, you know, again, I'm just parroting what I've been told by engineers. So I have to trust them, they're the experts. I'm certainly not in this area. So again, it came down to cost. And that's really the issue, is it came down to cost on that decision.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you for your time.
You are welcome.
Connie, I have about a minute left. Could I tell a quick joke to lighten this up? Your joke about this situation, please?
I think we should wait. You can tell me afterwards. Okay. I, but I really, I appreciate-
It's about this situation, it's about the lake.
Yeah, so I think, I really appreciate what everybody said tonight. And I, and I think that, you know, we have some pain points. There's no question. These people up here have some pain points. You all have some pain points. And, you know, some of these things, maybe we've got to work on a little bit. So I think Doug may have had a suggestion. And do you want to propose that?
So I called Connie earlier in Asia, I wanted to do this. I told her I wanted to do this, so she can give me time. So the summary of this is that we've heard a lot of complaints about transparency. We've heard a lot of complaints about lack of communication. Complaints about lack of community involvement, identification, timeline, and manner in which decisions are made. So it's all pretty important issues. And we can see how important it is because you're all here several weeks in a row, several meetings in a row, to talk to us about it. So I think it's prudent upon the council to address those in a very direct fashion. And I'm going to suggest that we put together an ad hoc committee of two council members. And I've already asked, I would like to be on that committee, and I already asked another person if they would do it. But two council members who would meet with the Walton Lake community individuals during the lifetime of this project and work on those issues and look for solutions and ways of implementing change in regard to how the council and the community interact and communicate. So that would be my motion.
Okay. With that, the, I think the, well, is there, that the motion would be for Doug? And-
I would second the motion.
And Mr. Rowe has also volunteered to be part of this committee.
I would volunteer as well, yeah.
And so there's a motion in the second. I know this is all new to council members. This hasn't, you know, well, has not been talked about. So prior, you know, this just was an idea this afternoon. And-
Well, it's an ad hoc committee that would dissolve at the conclusion of this project unless we see some value in continuing it in some other fashion. I don't know. Ed suggested something more permanent. That certainly could be on the table. But I think at least initially, we should start somewhere, and this might be the first step.
So I'll open that up for discussion for the council.
So just to understand, the property committee in July of last year recommended, and Ways and Means Committee have, I believe, together approved the Option One, the covert?
Yes.
And move forward with reducing the level of the lake draining it? So my understanding is we would continue with that process, but you would initiate a-
Well, I'm not suggesting anything about the project. I'm just suggesting that we have two council members from the committee to meet with the council, meet with the public and talk about issues of transparency and communication and the way we make decisions.
So the recommendation, the proper committee, Ways and Means remain?
Yeah.
What's the point?
Yes. So, yeah, what's the point? What's the point?
What's the point of that?
If you're not going to-
It's not by the city.
So hang on, hang on, hang on.
It's just a diversion.
The council has, would, would have to make a decision if they want to change the path that they've already taken.
Well, make a decision.
We'll make it.
Make it, please, hear him out. I think there needs to be, there would really need to be sit-down and additional problem-solving. Because first of all, and I'm not saying the council's going to go here. But we know, we have a signed contract, and get out of that contract is significant amounts of money. It's not wise for, it's not wise- It's not wise for, it's not wise for this council to use taxpayers' money in that way.
What if we bought it?
So, yeah.
We pay.
So, well, you know, I can't, I can't problem-solve that right now. I think that's a discussion that could be brought here. I mean, to Doug and to Matthew. And if they felt that it was worthy to bring it to council, then that could be discussed. So I think...
So if, if that's what people want to do, bring a new proposal that comes up to the same standards that the city expects for other proposals we've received for other bids, like we've already received from Drish. You made all those guidelines, you know, certainly look at it.
And you save money.
Well, we don't know that yet. That's why we're going to do the proposal, because we don't know if it's going to save money. Based on what we learned last year, and Paul Elizabeth's not here, but Ways and Means, the cheapest option was to put in the causeway. It was 140... Ed, I'm not going to argue. I'm just telling you what we decided last year. It was $144,000, thereabouts. Correct me if I'm wrong, council. I thought it was $144,000. It was the cheapest option available to the council at that time. And considering the fact that just this past year, we had $400,000 deficit to make up. Last year, it was $600,000 deficit we had to make up. We were certainly key on looking for the cheapest option available to us. And that was a big driving issue. It wasn't fishermen or kayaks for moving the lake. It was money.
Doug?
And you might think that's wrong, but...
No, I'm not disagreeing.
This is what happened.
It's 234.
It's not, we're not going to have discussion now with Doug. I just want him to explain what he wanted, and then we've got a motion on the floor and a second on the floor, and I want any additional discussion, whether you want to move forward with these two representatives to discuss any further, you know, ideas, messages with, yeah, Melanie. Melanie wants to say something.
No, any clarification?
Okay, thank you.
Because we have a contract for Drish construction that was signed, we've had a pre-construction meeting. I have a notice to proceed waiting on my desk. I don't want to be in breach of contract by not signing that notice to proceed. I guess I need action from the council as to whether I'm supposed to sign that or not. So I would like that clarified tonight. Thank you.
My original thought was work on transparency, communication, decision-making issues that the population here is objecting to.
Yes.
It wasn't to tell the council to set everything aside and come forth with another project.
Okay.
That was my original intent. If the council wants us to, the two of us, to entertain a proposal from the community that comes up to the specs that the city normally would receive, give us the time to...
Good, so council, do you want this, these two people to represent and do an ad hoc committee during the project? I mean, do you have questions or discussion points about that? And then we'll take a vote.
I understand it's an ad hoc committee to be convened during the project. The project is ongoing. There's a contract on the engineer's table to sign now. She can sign it.
Any other questions?
We've got the DNR to deal with. Come on.
So if there's no other discussion, call it a roll. Flournoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Canass?
Yes.